Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here. Moving on to item 1.7, Employee Introductions. Sharon from Community Development will be introducing Desiree Martinez, Gustavo Zamora Rocha, and Jonathan Olivas.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the community. I'm Sharon Goey, Community Development Director. Tonight I have three new folks to introduce as the mayor mentioned. First, I have our new coenforcement officer, Desiree Martinez, to introduce to you. Desiree comes to us with more than 11 years of hands-on coenforcement experience from the city of Hollister, managing everything from zoning compliance to signage and health and safety issues. Prior to this, Desiree worked as a permit technician supporting permitting and inspection processes. Desiree has earned a wall's worth of certifications, including Advanced Coenforcement Officer and a certification in management. Outside of work, she enjoys hiking, and she's a Niners fan. Please join me in welcoming Desiree.
Hi, Honorable, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Desiree Martinez, and as she had mentioned, I have worked with the city of Hollister for over a decade. I have lots of experience in coenforcement. I'm excited to bring it to the city of Gilroy, and I just want to thank you for having me.
Thank you.
So next, I have another coenforcement officer, Gustavo Zamora Rocha, to introduce you. Gustavo is originally from Watsonville, but he has spent most of his life in Sacramento. He comes from the city of Sacramento, where he was a coenforcement officer and also serving as a hearing officer over there. He also has experience as a non-sworn campus patrol officer for the Los Rios Police Department. He's a graduate of Sacramento State, and he's a Niners fan, too. So please join me in welcoming Gustavo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and honorable councilmembers. Thank you for having me, for the opportunity, and I look forward to making an impact on the city. And I'm glad to be back in the area. Thank you.
Last but not least, I have Jonathan Olivas, planner, too, for our Community Development Department. Jonathan comes to us from San Bernito County, where he served as an associate planner, working on a variety of current planning and long-range planning projects. Jonathan has a master's degree in urban planning from San Jose State, along with a certification in transportation and land use planning. Jonathan used to be a competitive powerlifter for nearly 20 years and actually earned two gold medals in the sport. He said that's amateur, but still pretty impressive. So please join me in welcoming Jonathan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with the community, and thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Gilroy.
Okay, we're going to jump to ceremonial items, number two. Proclamations. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one will be for Jacob's Heart, for Kicking Cancer Awareness Month, childhood, excuse me, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And the second one will be for retiring city employee Denise King. So I would like to do the Jacob's Heart cancer one first. Lissa, so I'll have you come up. I'll read it, and you can say a few words. And then after that, I will do the second proclamation. Denise will come up, and then we'll do pictures with you guys separately, please. Okay? Okay, whereas across the nation, 47 children are diagnosed with cancer every day, totally more than 17,000 new cases each year. And in Gilroy, 31 children and young adults, whether just beginning their journey or supported by Jacob's Heart over the last few years or more, have been embraced with care through treatment, remission, and even loss. And whereas, children with cancer and their families face unimaginable challenges, painful treatments, time away from school and friends, overwhelming medical bills, and the heartbreaking uncertainty of what tomorrow may bring. And yet, here in Gilroy, neighbors, businesses, schools, and community organizations have stepped up to wrap these families in love, support. And whereas, the Gilroy community has shown extraordinary heart, raising more than $41,000 through the Gilroy Rodeo's Kickin' Cancer Initiative over the past four years. Whereas, the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce has been a vital supporter in connecting, helping Jacob's Heart build relationships and strengthen partnerships. And whereas, Jacob's Heart has been honored to walk alongside Gilroy families since 2014, offering emotional, financial, and practical support thanks to the generosity of the Gilroy Foundation, Latino Family Fund, and countless caring neighbors. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on behalf of the entire city council and our entire community, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Let us celebrate the courage of our children, honor their memory, honor the memory of those we have lost, and stand united as a community to ensure that no family faces childhood cancer alone.
Thank you so much, Mayor Greg, and thank you so much to the City Council of Gilroy for proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. On behalf of Jacob's Heart and our 31 families that we have in our community who are facing childhood cancer, whether in treatment or in remission or grieving the loss of a child, I just want you to know how much the proclamation means. It tells families that they are not alone and that their community stands with them through the most difficult moments of their lives. I firsthand have seen how amazing this community is and supporters of Jacob's Heart, especially the Gilroy Rodeo. Every year, they've just grown and supported us, and I really think that brings awareness to Jacob's Heart and the support that we need, on top of everybody else in the community who has helped Jacob's Heart. Like I said, the Community Foundation, Latino Family Fund, and so many more have really supported Jacob's Heart. And because of all of your guys' generosity, we are able to wrap these families in love and support. Thank you so much.
Not sure if anyone sees how they raise that money at the rodeo. They do it mostly by passing a boot through the crowds. And doing that, you guys have raised that much money. It's pretty incredible. Okay, next Denise. Where's Denise? Come on. Okay. Whereas Denise King has served the city of Gilroy for exactly 24 years, having been hired on September 30, 2001. Whereas Denise held the position of Human Resources and Risk Management Assistant and Management Assistant, and served in both the Human Resources and Risk Management and Administration Departments. And whereas, over the last 24 years, Denise has processed and tracked thousands of employee salary and benefit transactions and employee performance evaluations, hundreds of liability claims, hundreds of property damage reports, supported hundreds of interview processes, answered thousands of phone calls and emails from employees and customers. And whereas Denise has a deep love for all things Disney and shares her passion and trips to the happiest place on earth with family, friends, and coworkers. And the dedication of emergency managers has strengthened our communities, helping residents recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. Whereas Denise has a very close family and always made her husband Steve, her two sons, John and Joey, and her parents, John and Vivian, and her sisters, Gina and Christine, her top priority. And whereas Denise is retiring from the city of Gilroy on September 30, 2025, and plans to relax, travel, and yes, go to Disneyland and spend time with family and friends. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire city council and all the citizens and employees of Gilroy, join in thanking Denise King for her commitment of service and her wish her well in her retirement for years to come. Congratulations.
Hello. So I would like to say thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the acknowledgement of my 24 years here with the city of Gilroy. The last 24 years have honestly just flown by. I mean, it just, it's very crazy, that 24. I remember exactly my first day and everything. I have the, have the honor to work with some great people throughout the years and experience so much and have some great memories. Thank you, Leanne. Who was betting? Thank you, Leanne, for all of you done for me. I appreciate, sorry, the trust you have with me and the guidance you provided. I have learned so much from you, and I'm so thankful to you. We have shared so much throughout the years with our work life and our personal lives. It's been a pleasure. I want to also thank my forever supporters, my family and my friends that are family, and for being here for tonight. I appreciate all of you. Thank you to my husband Steve and my sons John and Joey, who are super excited for all the extra time we're going to be having spending together. So I just want to say thank you very much again. It's been a true pleasure, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, and then here. Ready, one, two, three. Do we have anyone else?
Lauren, did you want to? Thank you so much. Three weeks from today, I'll be in Hawaii.
All right, so we're going to start with.
Very good.
All right, and then this one here. All right, ready, one, two, three. All right, got it.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to item, excuse me, council correspondence. We have none. Item number three. And item number four, Presentation to Council. A public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council.
Yes, Mayor, Council, we have three speakers at this time. First is Ron Kirkish, followed by Jennifer Delbono, followed by Greg Felios.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. First off, I'd like to say thank you, Brad, and Chief, and Greg, for flying the flag at half-staff in honor of our recently deceased Charlie Kirk. It's sad, and thanks for giving him that honor. Also, at the last meeting, I spoke about an incident at Los Anamos Park where a person that was illegally using meth got into an altercation with our police officers, breaking one hand, and the district attorney, Jeff Rosen, refused to accept the referral. He rejected it and refused to try the person. In that same vein, I've got some information from the year 2022, from the police department, thank you, Chief, and tell the person that gave it to me, thank you, too. So anyway, they compiled the information for 2022, the last six months. During those last six months, 25 referrals were rejected by the DA, DA Rosen. That's a lot. You know, our police aren't writing arrest warrants every day, but for six months, he rejected 25. And of those 25, 17 were drug-related, meaning he's not prosecuting drug issues. And you wonder why we have a drug problem. When you have a DA that is refusing to do his job to clean up our, keep our communities clean of drugs, he's not, he's not doing anything. He's refusing to do it. So anyway, I'll be getting more information. I've got more information coming from another city, and I intend to use this information often across the whole state of California. He needs to go the way, Jeff Rosen needs to go the way of other DAs in other cities that have, in other counties that have been let go, okay? And that's my intention, to bring the attention to his poor performance on this issue, to the community as a whole. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Delbono, followed by Greg Felios.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jennifer Delbono. I'm a resident of Gilroy, and I'm here to support my strong support for Measure A on the upcoming special election on the November ballot. Measure A is a temporary 5.8 cent sales tax, and it's a necessary response to an urgent crisis. With over $1 billion in federal funding lost, especially to programs like Medicaid, our county and our city is facing a real emergency. This isn't about new programs or extra spending. It's about keeping essential services running in our community. Without Measure A, we risk devastating cuts to our county's health care and safety net services, including Santa Clara Valley Medical Center, which serves tens of thousands of South County residents, regardless of their income or insurance status. If Measure A doesn't pass, we could see longer ER wait times, fewer beds, and reduced services for our most vulnerable neighbors, including ourselves, but including children, seniors, and people with disabilities. This measure is time-limited, locally controlled, and backed by oversight. Every dollar raised, estimated at $330 million per year, will stay right here in the county and preserves the care and services that many of our Gilroy community members rely on. Since I have more time than I wasn't anticipating, I'm going to read a few more things. With Measure A passing, we will keep our local hospitals open. It keeps our ERs open, and without it, Valley Medical Center, O'Connor, St. Louis, and regional hospitals could close. This means longer, losing ER trauma care, maternity wards, and cancer treatments. Everyone is at risk. We are interconnected in this, and our health of our community matters to all of us. This allows us to push back and protect our local care. It means that local control, local hospitals, and local solutions will be intact. This protects access, as I said, for seniors and people with disabilities, but includes children. And when we, it makes sure that local care stays strong. It keeps our doctors and our clinics open for the people who need them most. And it keeps the health care funding local. It's, again, short-term, five-year fix to keep health care local. Every dollar stays here in Santa Clara County, and the federal government can't touch it. It identifies, independent audits ensure that the money is spent only on health care. So with that, I urge our city council and all of my neighbors, my neighbors, to support Measure A with me. This isn't, this is about protecting our public health care system, ensuring that no one in our community is left behind. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Greg Felios.
Honorable public servants, before November 4th, this is November 4th, you're going to start to see this kind of stuff. November 4th, before November 4th, you're going to start to see this kind of stuff in your mailboxes. I urge you to please read this follow-up, get the information, get the facts, please, you know? Impact of federal budget cuts on critical services for South County residents. This is specifically tied to us, right here in Gilroy. St. Louis Regional Hospital, Valley Health Center, right here, Sixth and Camino Arroyo, Gardner Neighborhood Health Clinic, right there on Monterey, up to, the guests are, you know, a wide range of people who, they say, how many, how many people are on Medi-Cal? How many people, how many people is this going to affect? Approximately 20 to 30%, they say, in studies, of Gilroy residents are on Medi-Cal. That's about 12,000 to 20,000 of our residents are on Medi-Cal. This, the federal budget cuts will be affecting these 12,000 or 20,000 of your constituents. If this is important to you, if the health of the community is important to you, if you want your constituents to have the opportunity to utilize their, the public health and medical services, you will look into the, you will, you will support this. Now, people say, oh, gee, they hear the word tax. Oh, my God, another tax. Yes, you heard the word tax? Yes, now this is something, but you have, again, this is something that you have to decide for yourselves, and people are going to have to decide what is most important to them. Do we have to make cuts? We might have to make cuts, and that's, and I would hate to be an episode to have to make cuts, but you may have to make cuts in certain programs to get the proper funding for the health of this community. Let me plant, I'm just planting a seed today. This is, this is September 15th. October 6th, I'll be back. Mayor Bozo, he's agriculture, he loves planting seeds. I'm going to plant the seed in your head. I want you, I'm planting the seed of you guys to think about this. I'll be back with some fertilizer on October 6th. And we will, and we'll talk a little more, and I'm going to throw, and, and then, and then on October 20th, there'll be a little more, you know, because, because this is important, and I'm going to, I'm going to, and I'll be back with some, just a little more information. Okay, again, this is something to think about. I'm going to throw this in. And I went to the Gilroy Unified School District, and I spoke to them about this. I went to UCLA, and I graduated 50 years ago, and this is the kind of thing that I was, you know, I was hoping when I retired, I wouldn't have to be worrying about this kind of thing. Because, because back then, even back then, we were talking about universal health care. Well, this is the kind of thing that we have to think about to get the proper health care that is needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have no further speakers.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to another five, Reports of Councilmembers. Councilmember Bracco.
That's a report.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yeah, a couple of updates. I sit on the VTA Mobility Partnership Committee. A few things to note for everybody, the construction on the 25 interchange is continuing. I'm sure many of you are aware of it. Traffic is not fun, but it is moving along. Social media is out there if you want to get notifications on some of the updates, and there are some upcoming detours and whatnot. Another piece of information from recent meetings, I know it's on a lot of people's mind about how bad the 101 is in terms of the lanes, especially the number three lanes. I did bring it up at a previous meeting that Caltrans needs to actually drive to and from the meetings on those lanes because it is really, really bad, and their scheduled resurfacing is not until 2029. So hopefully, they will get the message on that and do some work on that. Another piece of information from the same committee is that obviously, everybody would like to see a new lane on the 101. There is, there is a program that they have started for this to create a new lane, which is an express lane, but there is no funding identified yet, so take that for what it will. They're still trying to identify funding for the Santa Teresa Extension, which is to go through to the 25. And that's most, most of the stuff from that. Also, there are a lot of construction detours. The road under the overpass has been a concern for a lot of residents for some time, for a long time. It was expressed that this was the responsibility of Caltrans. We now know it's the responsibility of Gilroy. Staff is looking at this, but I did mention to, to Caltrans and VTA as well that with all of the detours that we are having through that area, it's chewing up that road even more. And I don't know that we're going to be able to get any money out of them, but we should fight to get it, and staff is doing a good job to try to, to make that happen. One last thing in going into my election. One of the pet projects for me is the South Gateway, and some of our, and this is where the Monterey exit is, truck stop, et cetera. And we've had a blight problem for some time in that general area. It's been a personal pet project to me to try to bring that up, and it was also in our, some of our strategy sessions that these gateways are super important for economic development. And I will say that staff has done a really, really good job of making that a priority and getting in there between all of the departments, and it is really starting to become something new and better, and hopefully, we can continue on that path. So those are the updates I have for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
No report.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you from the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee. The 2026 Transit Service Plan is VTA's plan for bus and light rail service during the 2026 calendar year. Staff developed the 2026 service plan, starting with a draft proposed shared, proposal which was shared with the community earlier this summer, and city staff over a six-week engagement period. A Title VI survey, equity analysis, and revisions informed by community input to arrive at the final recommendation. The 2026 service plan is a budget-neutral plan with only minor updates to the 2025 plan, reflecting financial constraints that, that prevent service expansion at this time. The city of Gilroy and myself asked VTA to consider a route extension for the frequent VTA 68 to extend down to La Chesa Avenue, but that wasn't approved. But we will continue to advocate for this each year as we expand our downtown and build out our Southern Gateway. There will be a discontinuation of service partnership route due to low ridership for the Express 121, which is a Gilroy-Morgan Hill route that went to Lockheed Martin. This limited service with Monday through Friday, three buses north in the morning, three buses south in the afternoon, currently averages 20 riders a day. Even though this was an employer-sponsored route open to the public, it's not fiscally responsible to continue when routes aren't serving the current commute pattern, travel patterns, while VTA is facing a fiscally constrained fiscal year '26 and '27 transit operating budget. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the board approved the SPC fiscal year 2025-2026 operational budget and the fiscal years 2025 to 2027 strategic focus areas and strategic plan. No major changes to expenditures were proposed, and customer discounts will continue as SPC adjusts to anticipated falling energy prices over the next several years. Reserve funds, which have, which have been conserved for several years, will be accessed to ensure that SPC can continue to provide clean electricity while offering robust customer programs that reduce emissions. The agency's strategic focus areas and strategic plan will continue to emphasize energy affordability, grid stability, and customer programs that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. From the South County Youth Task Force Policy Team, the South County Youth Task Force Policy Team, or some people know it as SCYTF, is a regional collaboration of local governments, school districts, community and faith-based organizations, community members, and law enforcement agencies in South Santa Clara County, who are committed to serving, supporting, and uplifting our youth so that they have the opportunity to thrive. The city of Gilroy is a coordinating agency and the fiscal backbone of the South County Youth Task Force. Their mission is to promote a safe and nurturing community that creates and ensures sustainable access to opportunities, resources, and services for South County youth and their families while empowering their voice and supporting their growth and success. Their vision is a community that is safe and free of youth violence, where young people are strong, thriving, and connected to their families, schools, and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ramirez.
No report.
Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight something that's happening this week. This week, on the 17th, it is Constitution Day. It will be the 239th year of our Constitution, celebrating a nation living under one single governing document. It is the longest-lasting constitution in the world. No one has achieved what we have achieved as a nation. The Law School of the University of Chicago did a study back in 2009 and revealed that national constitutions have lasted an average of only 17 years since 1789, based on a couple of different factors. We all here take an oath of office at the local level, and we say we solemnly swear that we will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that we bear the true faith and allegiance to the same. This also happens at the county level, the state, and lastly, the federal level, and it shows how this weaves us together as a nation. President John Adams, in his second year, wrote a letter to the militia of Massachusetts on October 11, 1798, and made a few points concerning the Constitution. Firstly, he said, "Our Constitution was made for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." And finished it with, "Oaths in this country are as yet universally considered as sacred obligations. That which you have taken and so solemnly repeated on that venerable spot is an ample pledge of your sincerity and devotion to your country and its government." I want to encourage everyone to take the time this week and look at our Constitution, and I pray for the uniting of our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six. Excuse me, I have no reports. Moving on to item number-
Moving on to item number six, Consent Calendar. Any comments or questions about it? Okay, I'll move to public comments.
We have no speakers at this time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar of item number 6.1 through 6.4.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez, excuse me, Marks, and a second by Councilmember Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Air Boto.
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to item number seven, Introduction of New Business, 7.1, Receive, Report, and Provide Direction Regarding the City's Transient Occupancy Tax Rate and Ordinance Review Work Plan Item. Take it away, Harjo.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the committee. Harjo Tsong is the Finance Director with the City of Gilroy. I'll be presenting the item before you, which is basically providing a very high-level report, and then really initially seeking your direction regarding the council's work plan item related to the TOT rate and the ordinance review. Some history here, TOT, which is the Transient Occupancy Tax, is a local tax applied to guests staying in hotels, motels, or similar establishments for periods of 30 days or less. TOT generates revenue, which is basically to support general city services, or otherwise we call now discretionary funding, to provide services specifically for the Gilroy City Code. It is governed by the Chapter 25A. With respect to the history of when it was established, it was first established back in 1971 with a tax rate of 5%. Subsequent to that, it was amended by about four times, most notably in 1983, when the TOT rate was increased from the 5% to 9%. There were some other administrative updates that were made along the way, either as part of the comprehensive review of the Gilroy City Code, or specifically, you know, to the, to the TOT, to include RV parks and such. In addition to TOT, the city participates in what's called a Tourism Business Improvement District, also dubbed as T-Bid. It's essentially developed by the lodging businesses here in the city. It is managed by a Owners Association, also known as Gilroy Welcome Center, or Visit Gilroy to You more recently, and essentially is to promote tourism, marketing, and destination development. The Owners Association has its own management district plan, which they're governed by, outlines the types of services that they're required to provide. Currently, that T-Bid assessment is at 2%, and generates approximately $324,000. That's most, as recent as the current fiscal year. The T-Bid was created in 2012 initially for a five-year period. It was renewed in 2016 for a 10-year period, and, which is currently in effect and runs through December 31 of 2027. There is current interest and efforts that are underway to renew or extend the T-Bid for yet another 10-year term, so it's important for me to share this information as we're working with our partners, Visit Gilroy, and the council's having this discussion regarding TOT, you know, the city's TOT plus the T-Bid, what that effective rate might become be. I think it's important for you to take that into consideration. How did the TOT become a work plan? So as part of the current biannual budget development process, council held various strategic planning sessions at one of the early-on sessions, as well as the session in May, the council had expressed a desire to review the city's TOT rate and its ordinance, and primarily because Gilroy is known to have one of the lowest TOT rates within the county. So perhaps it's a low-hanging fruit that should be kind of taken a look at as well. This chart outlines the TOT revenue historically, primarily dates back, shows one year of fiscal year 2019, which is pre-COVID year, which was our baseline prior to COVID, about $1.8 million. As you can see, as the pandemic onset, it impacted travel, shelter-in-place orders were instituted. It did bottom out in fiscal year 21 to about $1.1 million, and then as the shelter-in-place orders were lifted, travel resumed, we did see that it almost returned to the pre-pandemic levels in fiscal year 23, however, has struggled to meet or beat, if you will. So with our most recent fiscal year that we just ended, on June 30, 2025, our preliminary actuals are showing that we generated about $1.5 million in TOT. With respect to where the City of Gilroy's TOT rate, how it pegs up to other jurisdictions within the county, this is a chart that illustrates that, essentially sorted by the TOT rate column from the highest to the lowest. What you can see here is Palo Alto has effectively a TOT rate, which is the highest in the county, of 15.5. Other jurisdictions like Santa Clara, Morgan Hill, San Jose, and Gilroy have some sort of a Tourism Improvement District or other assessments, such as Community Facility Districts, that are tacked on top of their TOT rate. So for Santa Clara, that additional Tourism Improvement is 2%. In addition to that, they also have a 2% CFD, which was formed at the time the Levi's Stadium was envisioned to come to the city. So effectively, you know, what that does is it adds the 13.5 plus the 2% for the improvement, plus the 2% for the CFD there. So similarly, most close to us, you know, Gilroy-Morgan Hill has a TOT rate of 11%, and then a similar to our Visit Gilroy, they have a Visit Morgan Hill, and their assessment is 1.5 for the T-Bid, so their effective rate is 12.5. And then, again, just going down for Gilroy, we have a TOT rate of 9%. With the 2% T-Bid that we have, we have an effective rate of essentially 11% on room rental share, with accounting having the lowest, which is the unincorporated areas of 8%. Discussion for policy and direction, essentially, the policy consideration for you is, you know, should the city maintain the current TOT rate of 9%? What does that mean? It keeps the current rate, that TOT, at 9%? It keeps it competitive for the operators in the region and does not provide any revenue for, additional revenue for city services. Should the council desire to explore a TOT rate increase, then the policy consideration is, you know, effectively, what is that threshold that the council is interested in, in raising that TOT rate, and what that might look like? And here, I've outlined an example. Based on the actual TOT revenues for fiscal year 25, which is 1.5, the one, any, each 1% increment in TOT would generate approximately $200,000 in additional general fund revenues, and then any increases to the TOT rate do require a voter approval via a ballot measure to be placed at an upcoming election. It can be either done by as a general tax, or it can be done as a special tax. General tax, again, requires a lower threshold, 50% plus one voter approval. Special tax requires a two-third voter approval, similar to something that the city had pursued back in November 2024 for the Public Safety Sales Tax. And then the third option really outlines is, anything else that the council is interested in with respect to this topic, information requests that we'd be happy to bring back, that you're interested in looking, we'll take notes, we'll bring that information back and present it back, back to you as part of this process. So that's the policy consideration and the direction. Financial impacts, again, no impact at this point for receiving this report, accommodated within my department and existing resources. Again, depending on the council's direction, particularly if there is a wish to explore a TOT rate increase, there would be fiscal impacts that are yet to be determined, and we would, again, depending on your direction, we would bring those back. Whether the council is interested in conducting any sort of a community survey, to do some kind of polling, once it has potential languages identified for the ballot measure, costs related to the ballot measures with respect to when we can place it, whether it's a special tax, general tax. Obviously, it's much cheaper to place a ballot measure at a regular general election, where there is a city council seat also for election. That would be in November of 2026. And another information related to, you know, best practices, other success cases, things of that nature, we would bring that back to you as well. And I have outlined, based on our 2024 elections, the city placed a Public Safety Special Sales Tax, which was dubbed the Measure C. The cost of that was approximately $91,000. And there's other legal costs related to legal reviews, drafting the ordinances and such, posting of the noticing, probably estimated to be less than $10,000 at this point, based on our last Measure C. And all that to say, potentially offset by increase in TOT revenue, should that ballot measure ultimately pass, so there is that opportunity as well. So with respect to next steps, what we're really looking for today is a direction as to, thumbs up, yes, explore this further, give some additional specifics that you might be interested in learning more about the process, we'll incorporate that and come back to you with that information, and then we'll, at the same time, provided that we're going to be targeting November 2026, potentially, we'll develop a tentative schedule for you to explore what that might look like with all the required steps of when council has to take actions, and then submit to the registrar or voter the final resolutions. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions at this point.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you. And thank you for also sending the summary this afternoon on where current hoteliers are with their...
With respect to the audit.
With respect to the audit. Okay. I, I just have a couple of questions. With the T-Bid talks, are they looking at maintaining that 2%? Or are they talking, has, I don't know if we're even at that point yet?
It is my understanding, we're, we're not, it's not finalized yet, but I, I'm not aware of at this point that rate being increased.
Okay, so, so...
But the existing management does allow up to 5%. So even the current management allows the T-Bid, the board has to vote on it, ultimately has to come to the council. That language is going to be, remain consistent whereby it will allow them to go up to 5%, but I have not received any indication that there is interest to raise that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, just, Airbnbs, how does that work? I mean, do we get...
Great question. It's a battle that I've been trying to fight since, ever since I've been here. We get very little compliance from Airbnb, VRBOs and such, so we have asked them to voluntarily go ahead and either disclose properties or try to collect on our behalf, and they simply denied, have, have denied that. Separately, we have pursued, you know, at least from our research, essentially, the number of Airbnbs that might be operating, if we can identify who the operator is, try to reach out to them. So all that to say, I think the amount of efforts involved is much far more in order for us to get compliance. We have about maybe a few that are properly registered and are collecting and remitting the TOT assessments to the city. I want to say it's probably less than about $5,000 that they're reporting in a given fiscal year. There is some good news. There is currently on the desk, governor's desk, there is a bill, 543, which essentially requires these facilitators to remit the, all those properties that are registered on their sites, the addresses, the contact information, as well as they're mandated to obtain the business license, a certification for the TOT and such. So I have very high expectation that that will get signed. It passed, it garnered good support in, in the Assembly as well as the Senate. So if that goes into effect, then essentially, early next year, we'll have access to that data, then it becomes a matter of essentially enforcement and compliance, so...
And what was that legislature again?
I believe it's called Senate Bill 346.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Fugazi.
So in addition to raising this, and you know, I raised this obviously in an email, maybe you can explain to council and the public that you can raise the tax by this ballot, but you can also pass a ballot measure that sets a cap, and then at any time the council, current council would desire to change what the TOT would like to be under that cap, meaning a percentage cap, that that is one of the possibilities. And if you could, in addition to explaining that, if you have any information of other cities recently that were able to do that and do it successfully, that are especially local ones, and if not, when you come back the next time or what have you, that would definitely be a, a piece of information that we'd like to entertain.
Yeah, sure. So what Councilmember Fugazi is alluding to is, as opposed to just simply stating, we're going to take to a ballot a question of saying, we're going to raise the city's TOT rate from 9% to, say, 11%, then effectively, that would become the rate with the effective date of the ordinance. What he's alluding to is, do we have the flexibility, or can we craft the ordinance and the ballot question in certain way where we say, we're going to set the cap at 15%, we're going to maintain it at 9% for the first, perhaps, one year, but then the council has the discretion in any given time to do the noticing, to adopt an ordinance to increase that rate incrementally, to say, either upwards towards 15, or during an economic downturn, if there is, or, you know, whatever case may be, should the council decide to lower that rate, they could potentially do that as part of the ordinance action, as opposed to going back to the ballot. With respect to how many cities have done that, I know of, I know City of Truckee has something similar, but we will definitely plan to bring that information back to you as part of our research to say, what's successful? How should that language? It's very, very critical that we get that language to be crafted and legally vetted out so that it, it is held up and doesn't get challenged. Yeah.
I just have one comment. Last week, Councilmember Ramirez, last week at Cities Association, we do on occasion go over different Senate bills and Assembly bills, and SB 346 was there, was talked about, and was unanimously, unanimously supported, excuse me, by the entire Cities Association, which we send back to, to the state in support of. So that one looks like it's on a good track, so, thank you. I'm going to turn to public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, Council, we have two speakers. First is Michelle Collins, followed by John Volardson.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Administrator, Attorney, and members of the public. I'm Michelle Carlin. I'm the President and CEO for the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce, and having spent my career in tourism at chambers and visitors' bureaus in communities across California, I think this is a great thing that you're taking a look at. 9% is actually pretty low. I would also look at researching surrounding counties. If you look at Monterey County, it's actually 10.5%. And so that would be, you know, a destination that people are looking at staying in versus staying in Gilroy. So it, it kind of like, you know, two ways to look at it. Do you want to be competitive and have a lower rate, or do you want to build up some sort of funds for something specific? So I would look at, as a council, if you do raise the rate, what is that funding going to? Is it just going to general service, or is it assigned to a specific project? I, you know, I think it's actually also very important to let you know that often the voters do not understand what the TO tax, TOT tax increase is. They read it, they think it's a tax on themselves, and so they vote it down. So the language has to be very succinct as to, this is paid by people that travel to the area, this is non-residential tax. Otherwise, you'll, you'll get people voting it down if you do decide to move in the direction of increasing it. So I would just take a look at those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Volardson.
Sorry, Mayor, I told you I wasn't going to speak tonight, but since he brought it up, the house next door to me is owned by a gentleman who lives down the street. It's a four-bedroom house. He rents out each room for $1,200 a month. He legally had the garage converted to two bedrooms. That's another $2,400 bucks. And then he added an ADU in back. That's $1,600 a month. He does not live in the house. Now, can our city attorney tell me, is that a motel? He doesn't live there.
It's not a question, it's not a question-and-answer session, this is a public comment.
Okay.
So if you make the comment, I think maybe one of us will have a question after you're complete.
Right. Well, that's basically what I'd like to know. I didn't know the City of Gilroy had a SWAT team, but they've been to the house twice already. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We have no other speakers at this time.
Thank you. In regards, in regards to, I believe what he's referring to is a long-term rental, not a short-term rental, and this...
Correct. I, I think we'd have to probably look at the property address and see what, what it is.
It sounds like a long-term rental.
It sounds like a long-term with ADU and such, and converted garage.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? For stat, go ahead, Councilmember Hilton. Comment, please. Go ahead.
So I'm, thank you for the Chamber of Commerce for speaking, and, you know, Visit Gilroy's here as well. Those are two voices that I would expect to hear tonight, and as we move forward and, and, you know, become partners with us, right? You talked about the language on the ballot and how that... You talked about the language on the ballot and how that's important. So you two play an important role in that. I really don't see this as like a need to go out and do like deep dive in the community for it. I mean, obviously this seems like business of the council. I like the idea of going to the ballots to see if there's a way that we can put a cap on there and that way we can all do it. And, you know, we do constituent services and talk to our residents. So I think that we can take that on ourselves. But, but, you know, thank you for the, both of them for, for being here and I'm generally supportive of moving this in this direction. Thanks.
I like that idea of the cap because it gives the flexibility, especially for a council, you have a downturn, you can, it gives just flexibility, I think, and that's what we're looking for. And so, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
One last comment too, in terms of competitiveness, I mean, we are likely right now the most competitive with hotel rooms already, right? Being where we are compared to Morgan Hill and then as you go north. So even adding a little bit onto our TOT is still going to keep us in the competitive space, I think, and I don't see that as a big issue. And yes, as far as supporting it and getting out there and making sure people understand it, that is a role of council. If we're in favor of this, we will have to get out there and let people know. The one in Hollister passed at 52% in a kind of a really bad election year. So I think I've got pretty good hope that we'll be, you know, we'll be in good shape here if we decide to go forward with this, but it does have to have our partners on board and look to see how we can, how we can use more funds for Gilroy. And yes, we do have a lot of things up here where, you know, we need recreation, or we need this, or we need that. And likely we could have been here years ago and probably left a lot of money on the table, in my personal opinion. So I would hate to leave more money on the table going forward without having this. So I look forward to more information. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comment from council? Looks like we have one more public comment. We're going to, we're going to go. I know, I know we want to get to the Raider game this evening, but.
Yes, Mayor, Council.
So does he.
I'll make this quick, Mayor, esteemed council members public. I'm interested in the TOT tax. I heard mentioned that maybe we don't need community input as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission and an advocate for our parks and our recreation programs. I know we're going to be talking about these issues later and they're always underfunded and we're lacking support and we're lacking money. Always comes down to money, doesn't it? So this is an area that if we're going to raise a tax and money's going to come to the City of Gilroy, I am interested in making it for purposes of recreation or our parks. We had a comment earlier about some issues that assign us, that's a real, that's a real issue. That can be taken care of with some lights and some improvement. So anything we can do to raise money that helps our parks and rec programs, I'm in favor of. So thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a consensus here, a thumbs up. Any specific, additional specific direction other than what you've already heard?
I just want to be sure that we come, we're very clear on, on our expectation back to you. So whatever we need to clarify.
Yep. If I may, I think generally thumbs up that we are going to explore a TOT increase. I've heard a specific direction with respect to exploring a ordinance or a ballot language, which provides that flexibility of putting a cap. Anything else?
Yeah, I would, I would like to see like a comparison, right, of the two of which we think is more successful. I don't think we should go out and poll it, but you, you use our partners, I mean, polling is expensive probably, but use our partners to be able to tell us, you know, educate us and I would say, Visit Gilroy Chamber of Commerce, help us. You know, as we look at both these options, which one is the best to, to get it passing? The Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission made a perfect example of more community advocacy that can help us, because if this does go on the ballot, the staff is not allowed to go out there and, and obviously hustle and, and, you know, to make sure that this passes, it's up to us as the electeds and commissioners to really let the community know the benefits for it. Because a tax measure, well, this would prevent from the, from the city trying to go out there and do it themselves. So they're going to need our help.
One more thing. Just one quick thing. Since it was mentioned in the public comment, you know, I would love, nothing more than to earmark certain things, but to do so would require a special use tax, which would make it very difficult or much more difficult, obviously, to pass this. So I just wanted to make that, that clarity. I wouldn't be in favor of a special use tax.
No, I think we should go for that general one.
Correct.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Real quick, I won't be here, but I worked on, I worked on for sales tax with four separate city councils and they all passed. One was a special tax. This thing's coming out. Sorry?
It's great. Is your mic on right?
The only thing I would encourage you to do is think hard before you make your final decision about possibly doing a proper survey, because they will test the difference opinions of the community, what they're willing to accept, plus it's a good educational tool. And I do believe, and I'll look to the city attorney, neither the staff or the council can promote a ballot measure. They can educate. And so usually what happens is in the community, a separate group forms, their own group, which then is the one that promotes support for the measure. And I've seen it be very successful. And the other real important thing, and again, this is because I'm a sure timer, you don't, having a 7-0 council support it is absolutely critical. It really is. Thank you.
Just in response to that comment, the staff and council members can support the tax, but not with city money. So essentially council members can campaign for it, but the city cannot do its own resources to doing so. And if staff does it, it would have to somehow do it privately on their own time.
Yeah. I'm going to discuss that with you after the meeting. That's the first time I've heard that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think direction has been given and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 7.2, Aquatics Center Interim Operator Direction. Take it away, Bryce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As mentioned, this item is seeking council direction regarding an interim operator that would be needed during the Recreation Division Assessment. So looking at a timeframe of approximately one to two years. The options as we go, well, let me step back. So the reason that we're coming to council for this as opposed to, as opposed to having the direction on the entirety of aquatics going forward, is because the assessment, as we'll talk about at the later gen item, all the components that councils ask staff to analyze all impact each other. So a decision on staffing, a decision on the general fund contribution, a decision on aquatics, all impact each other. So that is going to require a lot more assessment and deeper analysis as we go forward. But while that assessment is happening and as we move to implementation, we're going to have a couple of seasons of swimming that will be taking place during that period of time. And so I want to assess for council and keeping with the direction to bring back award in, in the fall, options. And these range from no programming, not providing service during that interim period, all of it to full-service operations, which is what's being offered currently. The key decision really is, is whether we begin pursuing in-house versus a contractor operation for that intervening time. Staff is recommending bidding out the operations during the assessment. We'll talk about why here in a moment. So to give a little bit of a real high summary of the background, the city previously operated aquatics at Christopher High School during the COVID, budget and staffing cuts and aquatics services were suspended. After COVID, the council at the time allowed contracting of services to resume aquatics. And then the latest is the 2425, the summer season just wrapped up, was the end of a one-year contract with Swimming Swan, which now ends that contract. In 2025, council requested the assessment as part of the budget process and strategic planning sessions, as well as feedback after the RFP process for the 25 season and future operator options. On June 16th, council provided direction to continue gathering data on projected costs and revenues, explore creative service delivery models, and then prepare RFP for fall 2025. We did, we did clarify that we understood that it was RFP documents coming back to council in the fall, not a bid award, but after conversations regarding that, realized that it was the intent that it be the actual contractor or potential contract award, which we can still make with November 17th council meeting. So again, the two, two main decision trees, I'll give a term, is one, the city is operator during that interim time or contractor. So the city's operator is a slightly higher cost, some staffing challenges that we'll have to work through to deliver service this summer, and then risk to service quality as we, as we ramp up that internal operation. It may deter also future vendor interest. The contractor's operator, there's a couple of options. One is extending the current contract with Swimming Swan directly or bidding out for one to two years. There's a risk of low vendor interest from the heightened bid requirements that are included in the packet for consideration of council. So we included in some cost projections, again, they're, they're low confidence numbers, we're backing into data from, from pieces of data from the contracting operator. And so we looked at seven different options for service models. These projections are assuming the city's providing the service, it's not the contractor. We can't really, A, we don't have the specific information to provide a detailed assessment of what the contractor would cost to do that. Additionally, we did get some data on Friday that we're trying to work into the staff and into this presentation. Unfortunately, there's just not enough time to do a thorough analysis on it. But part of that, that review is realizing that if we put the costs for the contractor out, it damages their bidding position when the bids go out or when we're receiving bids. And so that, that could cause some issues for the city as we go to award. So the cost projections in the staff report is if the city is operator. We have the options here. We focus on swim lessons and rec swim. Swim lessons as a swim lessons only program, about 206,000 for 2026. Once you go up to rec swim, that's when a full-time position at minimum would be required to be added. That's a large jump that you have from swim lessons to rec swim. Once you hit rec swim, the other services, pool rentals, birthday parties, aqua fitness, all those are cost recovery basis. And so those can be augmented as, as finances and the, and the cost recovery allows. So looking at both pools, down at the bottom, 540,000 for 2026 costs, and if slides are added, it's 29,000 in additional lifeguard and certification costs. We did look at revenue projections based on the numbers in 2025 from the contractor. They provide a total of tenants in different price ranges and then backed into the numbers based on what they were charging in the 2025 season. And so in total, we're estimating about 189,000. Again, the, these are assuming the, the rates that were charged in '25. We did increase them by about 3% CPI, consistent with our normal approach to user fee updates in between major user fee studies. This is, we estimate this to be the ballpark of what the contractor would have as far as their revenue as well. But again, it's backed into so low confidence numbers. We did look at net cost comparison between the two, looking at the net cost when we take the expenditures to operate the full service and then back out revenue. So for the city, the original cost from staff report was 570,000. The amount, as we mentioned in an email to council, it did have, the revenue for swim lessons was based on 2024, the table didn't update in the staff report. That's been updated at the bottom there. And so the revenue, we actually decreased and the participation decreased between 2024 and 2025 for the contractor. So using 2025, we're looking at 587,000, almost 588,000 for the city to run the full service in 2026. Contractor, again, we don't have their, their, their cost projections, but assuming a 5% increase, which has been their standard increase when, when going into multi-year, is 5%. And so that would put about 403,000. And so the, again, these are, these are projections. We won't know for sure until it's actually bid out and we have proposals. The advantage of bid is obviously it encourages competition. And so we're looking to, to try to utilize that to keep costs down as options to council. So staff's recommending authorization to release RFP to provide aquatic services for the next year with a one-year extension option at council's discretion, and using that to gather detailed cost and revenue data and reporting requirements from the contract. The next steps is council providing the direction on interim operator. Depending on the direction, we'll either finalize and release RFP, we'll either negotiate an extension to the agreement with the current contractor, begin recruitment and budget amendment to internalize pool operations, again, depending on direction or other direction that council identifies. And then public outreach will continue via social media and the newsletter. And then on the screen is a vendor distribution list, and these are the organizations that we're targeting for, targeted, transmittal of RFP documents to try and encourage them to, to bid in time. And so there's some familiar faces, YMCA Silicon Valley, Swimming Swan, but we also have others, which is USA Pools, Jeff Ellis Management, others that we've researched that do the service in this general area, as well as some statewide agencies that, that support operators, in which case we're hoping they will transmit those to their client list. That completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions or comments.
Let's go, Councilmember Brock, go first.
Bryce, that's for one year?
These, yeah, so this would be for 2026 and then 2027 on the right. And so we have higher costs in the first year if we take it over, just because we have to replace some of the equipment.
No, I'm talking about the contractor's price.
Yeah, so this year is three, I want to say 387,000.
So how much was the bid from Swimming Swan, the one we turned down?
That was 200 and, I want to say 250,000 approximately, and then it would increase 5% each year.
So.
We had a $125,000.
That's quite a bet by delaying it.
It did. Again, this is assuming directly negotiate with them and they keep that same 5% growth trend. Again, if we do direct, we enter negotiations with them to try to talk about, to get a better price. RFP bidding it out would probably, with that competition, may also be a more advantageous way of trying to control any cost increases.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Can you go back a few slides to the options and the costs? So the previous slide? So you have seven options there. If I recall correctly from a lot of public comment that we had, the big, big feedback that we had was swim lessons and we had a couple of people with the competition swim was a big part of the, the real concern is not having swim lessons for kids, I think. And so now go to the next slide. So when you show the, the 2026 costs for swim lessons only, now does that include the insurance? Because I thought the insurance was tied to the slides.
The insurance is tied to the slides. This is the cost for the city to operate, not the contractor.
Right, but don't we still have to have the insurance if we do slides, right?
We, yes, we do. So we're self-insured pool, so for us, just having the pool is going to, is going to be a, a potential risk of cost increase to our self-insured retention pool.
Got it. So it's 206,000 there and then the revenue is 120,000 is what you say? So there's a net of about 80,000 or something to provide swim lessons and, and that need for the community. And then to get the comp pool to be open, is it so much more because it's that many more hours or that many more people?
Yeah, so if, once we have the, the competition pool, we open it for rec swim, then we have, so with, with swimming lessons, it's scheduled, we know the, the number of people coming in, we can target lifeguarding towards the class itself. Once we open rec swim, then the ratio of lifeguards changes. We also have heightened level of certifications and verification. So we, at that point, we trigger the need for a full-time position, so a rec supervisor to oversee operations, swim lessons, rec swim that may come in, and just to kind of manage the pools as far as like the cashier service. Again, once you start having a free entry and at, at the gate payments, we start having cashier, we start adding part-time staffing.
So now go to the, go to the revenue slide again? So the rec swim without slides revenue, what would that be? Because I mean, you have a rec swim only cost, but I didn't see a rec swim only revenue.
Yeah, so we know the cost as far as what it would take to add that slide, two additional lifeguards, a couple of extra certification requirements that have to be paid for as far as licensure. The revenue is challenging. So I include the slides because the revenue that we have is with the slides. We've heard from, again, unfortunately anecdotal evidence, anecdotal statements is that, that rec swim had less participation when the slides were closed. So we put in the slides because that's the amount, the gate entry to rec swim doesn't differentiate which of the pools they're activating at the.
So maybe it's 20 grand if it didn't have the other, or who knows, right?
Yeah, we don't know.
Right, we, we don't know. But the net-net is we've got somewhere between 60 maybe and 80,000 that's left over that the city would have to pick up if we only had the comp pool open, right? And providing lessons, right? So somewhere, somewhere in there, just doing the lessons. And the city, I mean, also could potentially, again, because I'm, I'm still looking. And the city, I mean, also could potentially, again, because I'm still looking at this as what was most of the public feedback that we had, the biggest part of public feedback was don't take away swim lessons, don't take away swim lessons, don't take away swim lessons. And then I heard a lot of public feedback saying a lot of lower-income children can't afford to even go have swim lessons and whatnot. So the only thing I'm throwing out there at this point and to the rest of the council here is, wow, if you could have a swimming pool open, you could get lessons, you have the kids go in, and maybe we could pony up another 50 grand for, you know, for low-income people, you'd be at like 130 grand for the city. And I get it, slides aren't open, but it's an amusement park essentially for the city. And maybe if you really have the concern for the community, which is understandable, to have a swim lesson program for the city, that should be, you know, one thing to look at. Anyway, it would be helpful, and I think I sent you an email, if we were able to take those seven that were there before and distill them down into the, kind of the net-net best case, best information we could possibly think of, plus or minus 10% or whatever it might be, to make the better judgment on something like that. But thank you, thank you for answering the questions.
Councilmember Marks.
Bryce, isn't it true that if we have the slides down, though, we still have to maintain them, and that's a cost to the city?
So when you say the slides are down, do you mean as far as it's closed off?
Not used, like if we went with what Councilmember Fugazi is suggesting and not have the slides, we still have a cost in maintaining, correct?
Only if the condition deteriorates to the point where its presence alone would create a hazard. So when we close the slides, we wouldn't have to have OSHA certification anymore because they're not in operation. We'd be closing them off so we don't have the two lifeguards that have to be on station in that area. So we are, the cost would go down if we close those slides. The only time would be if they're allowed to deteriorate to a point where structurally they become an issue of falling or if there's enough corrosion. Again, this is long, long perspective here. At some point, if not maintained to some degree, it could present a risk. Again, that's.
I would really like to have this council consider maintaining, keeping the slides as part of this program, because as your report said, it increased our attendance for the swim program. And yes, swimming lessons are important, but also recreational swim is important too for the kids. And if the slides bring in enough of the population to support, to support the use of the pools, I would not like to see them penalized by shutting them down. We built them, we approved them for the purpose of the community, and it's just one more thing that is going to be taken away. And I would really like this council to say, no, let's pony up the money and let's do it, because all of a sudden, Councilmember Bracco is absolutely correct. We thought we were doing something great by doing this one-year contract, and we really kind of shot ourselves in the foot with the cost by doing that. So that's it.
Further comments or questions to my left? Let's go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two speakers. Our first speaker will be Alicia, followed by Luis Ramirez.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and city staff. My name is Alicia, born and raised in Gilroy, proud Gilroonian. Oh, what can I say about Christopher Aquatic Center? It lacks a lot for the community, including the students at Christopher High School who have swim classes in that competition pool. I don't recall the exact number, but there are only maybe less than a handful of lanes that are shallow for physical education teachers to conduct those classes. So there's one thing that also probably plays into the swim lessons and the amount of swim lessons that can be provided at that facility. Down the road, I'd love to see a reconstruction of the pool, similar to Gilroy High's pool where there's more shallow lanes. I think, I'd be curious to see how much money, how many people go to the swim classes or aqua fitness classes during the months of May through June? I think, I don't know that those numbers are high. So I would maybe see if you can entertain a contract from like June to end of August, you know, peak swim season. Yeah, I'd be really curious to see what your numbers are for those swim classes during the off-swim months. I think, to be completely honest, the city needs another public pool. I know we've talked about the civic center redesign, but we just need another public pool. I can't really think of another pool there is accessible to even like gym members in Gilroy. I know like Fitness Evolution on Church maybe had a pool way back when. I don't know if that's since been drained. But yeah, we lack swim facilities, and it's extremely important in this area. We have the ocean right over the hill, so it's, swimming should be a class that every student has the ability to attend, whether it's in school or outside of school. And I think that it should be at a reasonable price, so good luck with everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Luis Ramirez.
Mayor, city councilmembers. I understand the timing related to this next swim. The contractors need time to get things going, and so I don't know how feasible it's going to be to try to do something with the city in the next year. I think it's unfeasible. I don't think it's workable. But I think the council should look at the long-term perspective. What's going to be the philosophy of the city long-term with the recreation department? I think you're going to talk about that later as well. And leveraging everything we can. I don't know what the Gilroy High School pool looks like, Alicia, if it's got a shallow enough to do other swim lessons, GAV, I mean partnering with GAV, wherever we can to leverage the assets that the school district has, the local colleges have, and maybe we split it up. Maybe we do swim lessons here, and we do rec swim there, and Zumba Fitness over there. But you need somebody managing that and making that work. So that's my two cents on that, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
I just want to build a little bit on what Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Luis was talking about, is that one of the things that we decided earlier this year during our joint GUSD and Gilroy City Council meeting was to talk about a joint use agreement, right? And so that working group is happening. He's on it, I'm on it. We're trying to work on that agenda item, do the prep before February. But this is going to be, this is definitely something to talk about. I mean, we have a lot of these public facilities that are paid by either bond measures or public funds or somehow, some way, even if you don't have kids in the school anymore, we're still funding the school districts. And for us to try to open them up more, I mean, there's no way for us to be able to tell what a May use would be, because we don't, we can't put in anywhere. We are not even allowed to go to Christopher High School. So whether that means that, you know, somehow we can, you know, future, look in the future a little bit and think like, well, maybe we should open up the weekends, you know, at Gilroy High and the weekends at Christopher High School to do this more year-round, maybe that would somehow ease up a little bit on the staff, on the staff, if we take this internal, you know, what would the staff do if they're not doing the aquatics program? Maybe you could have this staffer actually work year-round and be that champion between both agencies to say, hey, we're taking swim lessons this month to Gilroy High School. And guess what? They're going to be on Saturday and Sunday mornings when the kids aren't even in school. We're not doing anything, you know, at all to them. Those are the kind of things that we're trying to come up with right now. And hopefully we'll have a public letter soon too, for the rest of us to be able to kind of get an idea and then openly be able to talk about it in February.
I really like hearing stuff like that, because it means you're taking a completely different look at a very difficult problem and coming up with other ways that we might be able to solve it. And if you, if you want to really do something like that, you have to have the staff on board who has the expertise and who can build those relationships and build those programs. And it is something much more long-term that you can look at and you're not coming back to all the time. You're building that expertise. And, you know, when it comes to the existing slides and the splashing, and it's all great stuff, I get it, it is, but that's sunk cost. And some of the people up here have heard me say that, you know, that's kind of the gambler's paradox. It's basically, it's something that's already been sunk, you can't look at it and go, okay, well, we already spent that, we should continue to use that. At some point, you can say, hey, look, what's the plan for us now? It can be a different plan for us now, a different reason for doing things now. And it is, you know, swimming lessons are absolutely the most critical part of what we do, and having more and more places to be able to do those and to have somebody in-house who's tasked with making sure that we have a great swim program wherever it has to reside is way more important to me than keeping afloat just the one entity that we have over and over and over again. Thank you.
So on record, thank you. I am a strong advocate for swim lessons. I think that every child in Gilroy needs to have an opportunity, whether we support that and supplement the cost for that, but this is not just, swim lessons are not just, you know, fun during the hot weather, they're life-saving instruments, and I think that all of our youth should have that opportunity. But I appreciate all the work that you put on this, Bryce. This was something that was very important to us as a council. You know, later on the agenda, we're looking at the opportunity to explore looking at recreation as a whole, and this is a piece of that recreation piece, a piece of recreation. And I think that the RFP that you have created for the short term is good, and I would like to advocate that we get that out to these vendors that you have listed and see what they can provide for us in the short term as we explore how we can possibly expand in a number of different ways the swim program moving forward.
Councilmember Hilton. Councilmember Klein.
I would just ask, in looking at the RFP, would we be looking at one year or two years? Because we're kind of exploring the process, so.
So what we're recommending is a one-year agreement with a one-year extension option. So council has the control point halfway through. If things are looking great in assessment, we're already moving towards implementation, and we don't have a contractor, then it can end. And if for some reason during implementation, it needs a little more time, then we have them on contract for a second year.
Councilmember Hilton. No? Okay. All right, well, it sounds like we have direction. So correct me if I'm wrong, council, we have direction. It sounds like we do, would like to explore the idea of taking this out to bid with the one-year term with a one-year option. Is that correct, everybody? Okay, that's the direction. We don't need action on that. That's the direction you were looking for, so there you go. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, moving on to item number 7.3. Authorize the city administrator to enter an agreement with the Mobile Modular Management Corporation to purchase the modular classroom at the Police Department Shooting Range for 1,000, excuse me, $148,648.38. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and community members. Tonight I am here presenting a request for authorization to purchase the modular classroom currently in use at the Police Department Shooting Range. This modular classroom represents, replaces an over 30-year-old facility that had to be decommissioned due to severe black mold and contamination. It provides a safe, dedicated space for state mandated firearms training, arrest and control instruction, de-escalation tactics and training, and firearms cleaning. The purchase price is $148,648.38, and funding has already been approved in fiscal year 26, 27 budget. The old classroom, in service for more than three decades, was closed in 2024 after health and safety risks were identified. To avoid disruption of required training, we entered into a 24-month lease with Mobile Modular Management Corporation in February 2024 at $2,326.34 per month. That lease is set to expire in February 2026. Mobile Modular has now provided purchase-off rent quote of $148,648.38, which includes sales tax. Officers must maintain proficiency, proficiency, there we go, in firearms use, arrest and control tactics, and de-escalation skills that require ongoing high-quality training. This facility allows us to: conduct classroom instruction on policies, procedures, and case law; provide a safe and designated area for firearms cleaning; support regional training opportunities with other law enforcement agencies. The benefits of this purchase: it eliminates lease costs and future rate increases; ensures uninterrupted training opportunities; and converts a temporary leased unit into a long-term There's three alternatives: continue the lease, which costs us $2,326.34 per month, with an anticipated 8% to 10% rate increase at the end of each two-year renewal cycle; seek other facilities, this would disrupt state mandated training and risk non-compliance. Staff recommends the third option, which is purchase, provides cost-saving stability and permanent ownership of a critical training facility. Once again, the purchase price is $148,648.38, which is already included in the approved fiscal year 26, 27 budget. This is a one-time capital expenditure that prevents additional lease payments through February 2026 and eliminates ongoing lease costs after that. Next step: if approved, the city administrator will execute the purchase agreement, transitioning the facility from leased to city-owned, ensuring long-term sustainability. In summary, this purchase is a cost-effective, forward-looking investment in the safety, training, and readiness of our officers. It ensures compliance with state mandates, safeguards health and safety, and protects our budget from rising lease costs. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
No questions for staff? Public comment?
No public speakers.
Well, I'll just make one comment before I look for action, but it seems to me, is this about right, six or seven-year return instead of renting? So I think for a capital expense like that, it's not a bad deal at all. So I think it's a great move. So I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I have a second by Councilmember Ramirez to authorize the city administrator to enter an agreement with Modular Management Corporation to purchase the modular classroom at the Police Department Shooting Range for $148,648.38, and authorize the city administrator to execute the purchasing agreement and related purchasing documents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Captain Powell. Moving on to 7.4. Authorize for council travel to the League of California Cities Annual Conference and selection of voting delegate.
Yes, Mayor and council, the annual League of California Cities Conference is coming up in October. We do have three council members that are registered, ten, Councilmember Fugazi, Ramirez, and Mayor Bozo, to attend. As, this is a, for those that are kind of watching, this is an annual training, education, and actually a voting policy meeting that happens every year. The League of California Cities looks out for city interests, both with the state, also Nash, with the National League of Cities as well. And so there's two components to this. One is the authorization to travel. For the travel policy that the council adopted, any travel council member has to be approved by council. And so the total cost for three members attended, $7,000. That primary cost is the membership, the members' entrance fee, as well as the, as well as the hotel lodging. The costs are already included in the budget, so there's no disappropriation needed for it. The other component of it, and another action, is to select a traveling council member as a voting delegate. So on Friday, they will have the general session, which is where a representative from each of the cities that are in attendance would be present to vote on any resolutions that are brought in. At this time, there are no resolutions that are listed, but there is an opportunity, according to the League of California Cities, that item may come up at the meeting itself or during that time. And so having a voting delegate assigned would provide that voice for the city of Gilroy and amongst the others voting on basic positions that the League of California of Gilroy and amongst the others voting on basic positions that the League of California Cities will take on certain matters. So that completes the, the presentation. And happy to address any questions.
Any questions for staff? Public comment?
There are no public speakers.
Okay, I'll go first. I just want to thank this community and this council for this opportunity for, for myself and the two others to go down to this event. You know, it's very important that our, our city is represented at, at events like this, because as we were talking about earlier, we need to have a seat at the table when it comes to a voice of not only what's going on in our county, but of what's going on in our state. And I appreciate the opportunity to network and learn new educational opportunities for all of us to bring back to this council and this community to use in this city. So I appreciate that. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, I'll, well, let's go on to one more, sorry, one more conversation. We do need to select a traveling council member as a voting delegate. So.
I'll make the motion that you approve that.
Second.
Any opposition?
Okay. I will take the first mo, I'll, we'll do two motions at the same time. Number one, authorize travel for councilmembers Fugazi, Ramirez, and Mayor Bozo to attend the League of California Cities Annual Conference and select Mayor Bozo as a voting delegate. I have a motion by councilmember Bracco and a second by councilmember Fugazi. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to item 7.5. Direction regarding the recreation assessment. Take it away, Bryce. You're very busy this evening. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So this is a follow-up to the legislative agenda item that's come for council. And this, this loops in the long-term vision of aquatics, but also looking at the other items that council identified, the general fund contribution to recreation, the cost of user fees, so the youth participation costs. We're also looking at the staffing, as, as we recall from the budget discussions, about additional staffing requests. And so, as we mentioned earlier, all of these interrelate and impact each other. And so we want to make sure that we're taking a holistic look at this to make sure we're getting it right from the beginning. And so, just a brief background, the Recreation Division, we've kind of mentioned this, the budget was due from, due from 2.7 million to 1.5, staff cut by two-thirds, and so we had some major program cuts. Council including the assessment in the legislative agenda, again, we talked about those, those items. And then, so council direction is needed, as this is the first item, we've talked about the, the full assessment, is whether the assessment is to be done in-house or by a consultant. So in the, in the staff report is a, is a little more lengthy description of the, the pros and cons of the two options. But in summary, internal, you have lower financial costs, more flexibility to adapt to changes because you're not under contract, higher staff time usage and a longer timeframe to delivery based on workload capacity. External, you basically flip them. So higher financial cost, but you have less, less staff time consumption, faster delivery with a greater focus, and then, but they are more rigid to contract. And so any changes or, or redirections would come likely with a cost element to it. And so staff can perform the assessment, but recommends hiring a consultant due to a couple of things. One is the high time investment that's required. There'll still be significant staff time invested because they're still going to look to staff to provide information and data and to give feedback. And also potential workload conflicts with other current items on the legislative agenda, but as well as anything that comes up that council wants admin recreation to undertake. There's funding availability in the Recreation Fund reserves, so there should be no general fund impact. If council decides to go this way, we'd come back with a budget amendment at the same time as, as contracted work for a consultant, should council decide to do that. Fiscal impact, there's no fiscal impact for the internal team, but there is, like I said, the operating cost of what we're focusing on. A consultant, we sent an email to council earlier, so it's funded from Recreation Fund reserves if approved. The range can vary widely depending on how in-depth the, the assessment is to go. And so it comes down to scoping the project. So $65,000 is generally on the lower end. That's just looking at the organizational operations, making sure we have our processes and procedures in place, general assessment. If there's higher-level work, like community, heavy community engagement that's going in, or redesigning or readdressing the needs assessment that was conducted in 2019, the costs ratchet up from there. So it really just depends on what council's willing to do when we do the scoping phase of the project. And that's going to happen with both options, whichever way council goes with it. So public outreach during this, we'll have ongoing council discussions during the assessment, regardless which, which path is, it goes, as well as updating the Parks and Rec Commission. We'll be doing updates via social media newsletter, and a more outreach planned during the assessment as, as, as executed. So next steps is the staff proceeds with whatever council's direction is, as far as it's, it's choice of which we're about to take. And either way, the scope of work meetings will happen with council for the, if an outside consultant is selected, then the scoping meetings with council members would happen before during the RFP creation. So lessons learned from the aquatics process, reaching out to council ahead of time. That completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions or comments.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Bryce. So this is a question either for you or for Brad, and you kind of already touched on it a little bit on your executive summary. But for those that are new here on the council, including myself, that was not here during the assessment period or any of that budget stuff, could you give us, since it was downsized and we don't have a department director, can you clarify roles here? Like who you are? Like, how, how come you've been up so many times talking about the rec thing, right? And I already talked to Brad about this a little bit, but it's, it's, I think it would work. And, you know, Adam Henig, he's a manager, like, who are the people below him? And John Doughty, I know he plays a role, and we have a commission. So I don't know if, you could summarize all that in a little bit?
I'll, I'll give it an attempt. So in 2022, the position, my position was reclassified from a senior analyst to assistant, to the city administrator. As part of that, three possible division, supervision assignments were possible. One, recreation, emergency services, and economic development. So the previous city administrator assigned two, recreation and emergency services, and retained economic development under their direct supervision. And so Adam Henig, the recreation manager oversees day-to-day operations, looks at strategic planning and the budget for the division. And then I'm an extra level up. If there's issues that pop up, then to help try to address that. And the same thing, whenever there's direction coming from council, to kind of serve, it, it was a way to reduce the amount of direct reports to the city administrator, give more time to look at the different departments. And so for recreation and emergency services, I, I fulfill that role. And then if there's anything that's above my level to address, isn't escalated up to the city administrator. The Parks and Rec Commission is a, operates within two different divisions. So they oversee, not oversee, but they provide advisory services to recreation programming, but also parks issues. The oversight or the staff liaison and executive sponsor for that commission has changed over time, primarily because the, the majority of the work that that commission oversees is more, or interacts with is more on the parks operation side, parks maintenance conditions, parks projects. And so over time, the staff liaison has been the recreation manager. When the executive sponsorship program came on, I was over, still am over Arts and Culture Commission, and Public Works Director was assigned as executive sponsor since, again, primarily as parks activities that are addressed. Over time, the staffing has changed, and we've had developments in both who's filling positions and at the same time staffing within Public Works. Now the staff liaison executive sponsor for the Parks Recreation Commission are in the Public Works Department, Parks Operations staff as well. Adam does attend on behalf of the Recreation Division, will give updates to the commission, but over the staffing liaisons, fact of the term, is in the Public Works Department, but I still retain oversight over the recreation function.
Thank you.
I just brought up another question. So again, since I'm new, does that mean pre-COVID there was a director-level position for, okay, I just wanted it to be there. So they got clipped after, when COVID hit and.
Going in, going into COVID, that 2019 to 2020 budget, it got cut.
Got it.
The 1.5, so we were at 2.7 million, had a director, more staff. The Recreation Department oversaw three or four commissions, I think, that were, that were in existence before the consolidation and reallocation. So once that funding was cut down, and, you know, the, the focus of the department during COVID was focused on vulnerable populations, senior center operations, adaptive programming, youth as much as possible. And then if there's, as we came out of, out of COVID, then it was added, if there's other ways to deliver on, some other services recreation had, then they pursue that as time goes on.
Councilmember Ramirez?
So it just came to my attention tonight that a few years ago, there was a community assessment done with regards to, is that correct? I don't know if that's the correct term that you used, with regards to what the community would like to see offered through the rec department?
It was a long time.
Is any of that relevant now? Could any of that be used in this assessment pro, or process? Or is it pre-COVID and post-COVID, non, non kind of relevant? Or can you speak on that?
So it's, it's, in short, uncertain, to be perfectly honest. So the, the data and the surveys that were conducted were pre-COVID. The community input that we've received, as far as like comments about aquatics, and like, as we heard today, a pool, that, that was in the needs assessment identified. So one of the components of the assessment is to look back at that and determine, and as far as that scoping effort that we'll do as council, is the data and information there considered by council to be still relevant? Or is council wishing to go back and reassess and update that study?
So I, I would just like to advocate that we, this recreation is, is an integral part of a community. And we've heard on a number of occasions where our families have to go outside of Gilroy to provide the opportunities for their children, driving up to San Jose, Hollister, whatever, and that impacts families that we have here locally. The parks are also something that needs, need to be addressed. I think that, that there's possibly, you know, and that would overlap, of course, into public, but, I'm sorry, public, John's, Public Works, thank you. But I would like to advocate for getting a consultant in and doing a full scope assessment so that we can look at the direction that we need to go and what we can strive for as a community to offer, you know, a really high-quality recreation program to our community, because I think our community deserves it.
Councilmember Klein?
I would agree with, with what councilmember Ramirez said, is we're exploring all the options. It's really incumbent upon us to, to do that.
So outside consultant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yeah, so it was, it was 2019 when Proz Consulting did that. They developed the recreation facility and program needs assessment. I, I was a part of that when I was a commissioner on the, on the bike bed. And I think we're at another point where it is important for us to reflect back on what that is. I know that sometimes we still say like, well, the needs assessment said that we should build this. And it's, it's, to me, it's outdated, right? I mean, this is one of those points where, you know, if we look back to like, okay, well, what does our Parks Master Plan say? And you're like, well, that's from 2005. And no one's around anymore. So this is one of those moments where, yeah, it is best to do, to have a consultant, do it again. Stop referring back to something that's, that's, that's six years ago. And I think that we'll be able to tap into, to other resources that maybe we're not all aware of right now. So that's why I'm, I, I think it's good that we move forward on that. And obviously, we have the funding for it, too.
Public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three speakers. Our first speaker will be Emily Miller, followed by Alicia, followed by Luis Ramirez.
Hello. I'm Emily Miller. I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And good evening. I'm here tonight to speak about the importance of recreation in Gilroy. Like others have mentioned, and I've heard around the community, people have to leave town to do recreation programs and be at dog parks and play pickleball and do swim lessons. And it's far, and it'd be nice if we could build community here. When I look at neighboring cities like Morgan Hill and Hollister, they have significantly invested in their programming and their facilities, and it shows. I think our residents would benefit from, you know, increasing funding to Parks and Recreation. Every dollar spent on recreation is an investment in public health, youth engagement, and community pride. I pray, I, I, I ask, I urge you to prioritize and expand funding for recreation.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Alicia, followed by Luis Ramirez.
Hello again. So I think back in November, there was a tax initiative that didn't pass for public safety. I think recreation is public safety. I think if you look at it like that, and you look into funding it as that, I think you can sell it to a lot more people. I think we all see the youth out and about. Morgan Hill, they just had their police department put out, hey, we're going to have bicycle police officers, we're going to really enforce these bicycle laws, we're going to issue citation to these individuals who are, you know, riding bikes unsafely, right? So it is public safety. So that's, that's kind of where I would, I would love to kind of look at recreation and the need for our city. We have 61,000 people living here, roughly. That's the 2024 data. I just, I, there's, you know, I grew up in rec programs in Gilroy back in the 90s. I worked in recreation for the city of Gilroy in 2010, and it was a robust program back then. And I just, there's no reason why it can't be now. I know we talk about the civic center redesign and, you know, my kids are nine years old. Will they ever see a recreation facility in Gilroy? We'll see. So I think recreation from, you know, babies to, to our aging population, I think across the board, we need to really just fund everything we can into this. I don't like spending $65,000 or $200,000 for an assessment, but if it works, then, you know, let's do it. But I just, I really, really encourage you all to fund recreation as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Louis Ramirez.
Hello again. I like what Alicia said, and just to kind of piggyback on that, when I raised my kids, they were probably, you know, 10, 11 back in the early 2000s. And we looked forward every year to see the summer rec program come out, because it's about this thick. And, and we could put our kids in multiple programs at a reasonable cost throughout summer long, and it really eased the burden of us as working parents, that our kids were taken care of in a city-run programs. We don't have any more because they're mostly contractors. I think Adam and his team do a great job. Bryce, Bryce is busy, but he's also overseeing rec programs. I'm not saying we have to hire department directors, but I think we need to reinvest and look at, at, at recreation. Recreation is, is a basic service that I think a city should provide, just like police and fire. It is a public safety issue. The more you engage our youth, and especially on certain parts of town, the more you engage them with some activities that we can get to them, the more you get them off street and get them doing something more productive. So I, I urge the city council to look at this from a big-picture perspective and relook at recreation, not just as an overhead, something that we throw some money at and hopefully just get as much as we can done with four people, which what we have right now is four people, running a rec program for 61,000 people. Watsonville did a tax, they did it with the guise of public safety. They passed that tax, and now they have a secure source of funding for their rec programs. I'd like for us to look at something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Yeah, go ahead.
I was waiting to hear some of the, the feedback. Recreation is absolutely important, and I was one of those people, too, Luis, so one of those kids that was in the, the baseball early on down in Southern California. So I, I absolutely understand the need, and I think an assessment is absolutely necessary to look at. And I hope as we start to give direction, we can look at it from a couple of menu options, A, B, and C, or something in terms of an overall cost to the city, that we could get these things, or we get those things, or this, because we do have to be fiscally aware at the same time. Many people will mention other cities that have great programs, and they do. But one of the, the things that Gilroy has done very well, especially in recent times, is the money management. If you look to the city to the north, they're looking to figure out what they're going to do there. You look to places like. You look to places like Salinas, or budget issues are everywhere. And here in Gilroy, we've been really good at looking at it, probably sometimes to a little bit to a fault, I will admit. But it is very important to, to keep that in mind, that if we are not fiscally sound, nobody gets anything. So I've said it before, I'll say it again, I want to look at new ways to come up with more money for what's there. The TOT tax was one of the things that I put out there when we did our strategy because of things like that. Every little bit helps. If it's 300, 400, $500,000, it all helps. I get that it's not completely sequestered for that, but it certainly allows to be able to have the conversation to say, yeah, we've got some extra money here, let's go after this, and let's put it for lower-income people to help subsidize certain programs and do these different things. So assessment, absolutely. I don't like spending money on consultants either, but every one of Bryce's points that he put on the comparison are absolutely spot-on, and I'd support it.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Just one last comment. And I appreciate Alicia and Luis, your comments about it's also a public safety issue. It overlaps. I agree with that. I also think it's also an economic development component as well. So there's, it touches on so many things. That's why I've said it's an integral part of the community. So I really would like to see it.
Councilmember Klein, and then Hilton?
And quickly, just one aspect of that is we have a sports park that needs to be developed to really be fully functional. So that's part of that whole thing of what we have here. That's a big part. So I really advocate for that.
Councilmember Hilton?
And it sounds like we're moving to a consultant. So obviously, hopefully, that consultant looks back on this meeting, you know, and can, and can listen to the other item, too. But one of the things about, you know, we own a lot of these facilities, and we own the land, and we already have, one of the things about that joint working group is to really point out the stuff that we already do for free for those community-based organizations and other community, just organizations that provide community benefit. We already waive fees and give them space. You know, the South County Youth Task Force and the late-night gym, right? That was their funding and us going like, hey, yeah, we have the facility, we both built it, go ahead and use it. We're not going to charge you any fees for it. So we have our own ways to do that. And GUSD, you know, has a lot of great facilities that were open, open parks and stuff like that, that they've closed off over the years for very good reasons. But that doesn't mean that we can't have a good talk and assessment and say, hey, we need you now. Thank you for donating that gym, or thank you for allowing that community group to use your pickleball facilities, but can you open up that field so we can provide these rec services? Because now we're partners with X organization or whatever that has that private funding. So hopefully that, that, oh, and then the general fund surplus, last comment on that, is that, that's something that's already coming back to this council. I think parks and economic development has been something that all of us are passionate about, and we keep talking about, you know, even saying the word pickleball over and over again. But general fund surplus, talking about that going into parks facilities, is going to be coming back before any of this. So I look to that as like, you know, something for this consultant and stuff like that to pay attention to that we're, that we're doing, just as much as they're paying attention to that joint use working agreement with GUSD. Like, pay attention to both those things, but we don't have to wait to do those things while this assessment is, is taking place. Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco?
As part of that assessment, can we make sure that it has in there about all the joint-use facilities we have that we paid half for with the school district?
I'll make a final comment before we look for some direction for staff. I just met with President of Gavilan College the other day, and he has opened the door and the invitation for our city to communicate and work alongside Gavilan College to do, to do the things exactly what we're talking about tonight. And, you know, they have, they have a swimming pool, and they have a gym, and they have tennis courts, and they have a softball field, a baseball field, a soccer field, a football field, and golf. So I think the door is wide open. And they also have a different funding source, so they do things a little bit differently and off-schedule than we do. So I think there's a giant opportunity as well, as we've talked about today, all of us, about joint-use agreements. It's not, it's not just with Gilroy Unified. So I think we have some real opportunities here. So it sounds like to me, we have some direction for staff that we want to go to outside source with the idea that you come back with a lot of different options and pricing levels so we can make the decision what's best for Gilroy. Thank you. Thank you very much, Bryce. Big night tonight. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, city administrators' report.
A couple of quick items. Harjo, our finance director, informed me the beginning of this week, or last week, that they closed escrow on the property at 6601 Cameron Boulevard. This is important because the location will be a future well site that'll help bolster the reliability of the city's water supply. So that's very good news. Also, while attending the American Water Works Association last year, Heath, our utilities director, heard about submitting a PFAS class action claim against 3M and DuPont. These are a group of synthetic forever chemicals that I'm sure you've heard about, been used since 1940s to make products such as water, grease, and stain-resistant. He estimates we will be getting over half a million dollars that could be used for infrastructure improvements. I always like to bring these up. One, it's great to get additional revenue. But two, it shows the advantage of sending our staff to conferences and training sessions, because they pull in a lot of good information that they can bring back and utilize. So good work.
Thank you. Moving on, item number nine, city attorneys' report.
Just a brief report on the housing element case that just came out. You know, a couple of years ago, when Gilroy was dealing with the state bureaucracy and HCD to get our housing element certified, which was not an easy task, we never took the position that we did not have to do that, that we were not bound by state law because we're a charter city. And other, I never suggested that to staff or council, because I thought it was a foolish position. And other charter cities agreed, except Huntington Beach. Huntington Beach decided that they did not like their arena numbers, and they therefore would not adopt a housing element. And they were a charter city. They took the position that as a charter city, their home rule powers meant they did not have to comply with the state law. So they sued the state in federal court, which was a quixotic thing to do, and the federal judge threw it out on the basis that federal courts had no jurisdiction over a case like that, which was predictable. Then the state attorney general sued them in state court, and the case just came out, the state, the state won. So the court decision was that even though Huntington Beach is a charter city, they have to have a housing element, and they are subject to all of the court penalties of various kinds that exist in state law for not having one. So it was a very foolish decision on their part, and I guess this is probably the last word, I don't think it should go any further, but it just reinforces that even though we are a charter city, we are, we and other charter cities are bound by the state housing laws, just the way general law seems.
Thank you very much. Item number 10, adjournment. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.